Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are recording.
Again, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June 21st. Virtual to order, please. Any agenda additions or deletions?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll move on. I need a resolution that the June 21st Committee of the Whole Agenda be adopted. Councillor Weeb, second councillor Leach, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Mr. Taylor, do we have delegation?
No delegation at this point in the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll move to adoption of the committee of the whole minute meeting minutes. I need someone to move that the May 17th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes be adopted as presented. Councillor Howe, second councillor Leach, any errors or omissions? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Be no business arising from the minutes. We'll move to item 6.1, reports and presentations of staff, District of Lilawet Childcare Plan, and Burrell, Childcare Planning Consultant, presentation of the Childcare Action Plan.
If you'd like to turn on your camera and your microphone now.
Welcome, Ms. Burrell.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to be here virtually. I hope to be there in person, but I understand you're not yet meeting in person. So it's good to meet everybody virtually. I'm just going to share my presentation with you here. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to take you quickly through the highlights of the Lilawet Neest Assessment and Childcare Plan that has been put together by myself with funding from the Union of BC Municipalities and with the support of Lilawet staff, particularly with the manager recreation being here. So the project started in late 2020 and has progressed through the following phases. Planning and background research was the first phase, a fairly substantial community engagement process, and data collection and analysis process, and then the development of the plan and a review of the draft plan by the Community Advisory Committee. So we did have good representation on our advisory committee. We had between 12 and 15 members participating. We had six meetings and they provided a fair bit of input into the process all the way along. We had approximately 100 people engage with us either via our online survey or through interviews, in-person interviews, phone interviews, discussions by phone, and so on. We received 67 responses to our parent survey, which was launched in February of 2021, and it was open for approximately six weeks. It was promoted through a variety of different routes, both in social media and also through postcards that were distributed around the community. We followed that with interviews with parents, with childcare providers in the community, and with a number of folks in the community who have some kind of interest in community, the health of the community, in childcare generally, or could provide some information about the context of the community in Lilawet. As you can imagine, putting together an action plan around any issue during COVID was a little bit challenging. You know, when you can't actually physically come to the community. Fortunately, I was actually able to come finally in June to the community and meet folks in person, do a bit of orientation to the community, get to know the community a little bit, and do site visits with all of the childcare facilities. So I think in terms of a process like this, we had a fairly strong community engagement process, particularly given the constraints that we were operating under with the pandemic restrictions. So from our parent survey, we had, as I said, a good response. We had 67 parent survey respondents. About 72% of those lived in Lilawet, 16% lived in the surrounding indigenous communities, and 12% lived in the rural areas outside of the District of Lilawet. And those parent surveys, survey responses represented about 100 children, just probably around 25% or a little bit higher, 30% of the total number of children that live in the district and in the surrounding area. And this is just sort of the age breakdown of children in those families. So from that survey, just some highlights of some of the things that we learned. We learned that only 15% of children were actually in some type of licensed childcare, while 57% were being cared for at home by a parent. And that wasn't always the sort of typical or stereotypical situation where dad is out at work in a job and mom is at home taking care of kids. Often, it was children who were cared for by a parent who was also trying to work from home at the same time. So this quote from one of the parents in the survey, I think really spelled it out how challenging that that has been for their family. For people who were unable to find childcare for their children, 31%, they just said they just simply weren't able to find the space, and 25% said that they found that childcare was too expensive. Of kids who were being cared for informally, so a lot of the childcare in Lilawet is actually informal care. It's unlicensed. If families finding a family member, a neighbor, an extended family member, a family friend who can care for their child one or two or five days a week, and often they are passing together bits and pieces of childcare to meet their needs. So of that informal care, about 50% of that is being provided by grandparents. And the other 50%, as I said, is a combination of neighbors, older siblings, family friends, and so on. Babysitters, variety of other kinds of informal options. And of those who had found informal, unlicensed care, 57% said they would much prefer to have paid licensed care for their child. It's much more stable and consistent. It has a number of other different kinds of benefits. Certainly, there's pros and cons for every family, but 57% said that they were looking for a different type of care, a more formal type of care. We asked families in the survey what some of the challenges, that lack of childcare or the childcare challenges that they faced, what the implications of that were for their families. And this is, these are some of the highlights. Quite a number of folks talked about both the financial or economic impact on their family, both in this sort of immediate term and also in the long term, including about a third of them indicating that they may need to leave the community if they're unable to secure consistent childcare for their children. So right now, we did, we did, I did talk with all of the childcare providers in Lilawet and the surrounding area. Essentially, there are currently four licensed childcare facilities, as you probably all know. There is a fifth facility out at Houston, but the distance really makes it inaccessible for folks who live in Lilawet to drive their children and drop them off, and then drive back into Lilawet, and then to go back out and pick them up and drive back again. So doing that twice a day makes it really not particularly accessible. There's a table in the report that gives a breakdown of the different types of childcare that are available, but essentially, there are 76 licensed spaces. And those are located in the group childcare centers, as well as one family daycare that has been operating for quite a long time in the community. However, the reality is that there are currently actually only 55 spaces available, and that is due to a combination of staff shortages and restrictions as a result of COVID. Some facilities have had to reduce their numbers to try to just manage, manage the exposure risk. But staffing has been an ongoing challenge for group centers, I think, since they've opened. That's not unusual. Many communities are struggling to find staff for childcare facilities. There's essentially a provincial shortage of staff for those types of facilities. There are only about three spaces accessible for children who are underage, two and a half or three. One of the group facilities will accept children in that age range, and the family daycare will as well, but because of licensing restrictions between the two, they can really only accommodate two or three children. And there are no other options for families with infants and toddlers. And there are similarly no childcare options for families that have children who are in school but who need care before school or after school. Again, some of those children can be accommodated in the existing program, but generally, those spaces are filled with kids who are there all day, and so there's not space for kids who need to show up at 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon. So essentially, functionally means that there are no after, before, and after-school spaces. So determining what the actual needs are for a community is not a precise science. There are a variety of sort of formula-based projections that different communities have used to determine what the needs are, but it's not an exact science. And certainly, in rural communities who haven't had particularly robust childcare options in their community, it's even more challenging because people have coped for a very long time and have found really creative ways of getting their needs met. But these estimates are sort of looking long range in terms of, you know, a community of this size with the number of children that live in the community and the BC population projections, growth projections that I looked at. I would suggest that over the next sort of period of time, in the number of years, you probably need between 20 and 30 spaces available for infants and toddlers, and up to 40, or perhaps even 60, for after-school spaces. Now, some of that obviously is dependent on other community factors, things like the economic development in the community, amount of jobs available, and so on. But all of those things interact with each other. So we definitely heard from parents who said, you know, "I would like to be working, and I think there's, you know, there are opportunities for me to be working, but I don't have childcare." We heard from other folks in the community who said there are employers who can't fill spaces, and at the same time, we have people who are at home with their kids because they can't find childcare. And so there are some parallels in terms of those two issues. I don't think you would want to open, you know, 30 infant spaces tomorrow. I think it would be, you know, it's, I would recommend a slower kind of growth process in terms of developing new spaces, but there are some plans in the works, and so that's really encouraging. And I think over time, these are targets to be aimed for. One of the requirements of the UBCM grant funding that you received was to identify specific targets for a 10-year period in increments of short, medium, and long term. So these are the, these are the long-term targets. So you obviously would start with fewer than that to begin with, and over time, to grow access to childcare over time. So in the document that was distributed, I've made some recommendations in terms of ways that the District of Lilawet can encourage the development of childcare facilities in the community. We certainly, as I said, heard from parents and even from childcare providers that this is, you know, this is a really pressing issue in the community, that there's a really substantial need. And so there are things, you know, there's multiple levels of government involved in childcare, obviously. But there are some things that municipalities and local governments can do to support the development of new facilities. Some local governments are actually getting into the childcare business. That obviously would be up to the District of Lilawet, whether you wanted to go down that path or not. But even if you don't, there are some things that you can do at a policy level, some actions you can take, and also advocacy that local government can get involved in in terms of addressing this issue. Lilawet certainly isn't alone in struggling to meet their childcare needs. So there are, you know, a number of other municipalities who are working on this issue and are advocating for change at other levels of government. And that seems to be, that seems to be being heard, and there seems to be some forward motion in terms of this. So some of the recommendations, these are really just summaries of the recommendations that are in the report, but looking at, you know, embedding childcare as an issue and as a priority in your planning and policy work, building financial incentive programs, so whether that's waiving development cost charges or tax incentive, developing tax incentive programs, things like that, looking at your municipal asset management plan and opportunities to leverage funding opportunities when you're upgrading existing facilities to accommodate spaces, which then municipalities can operate or can contract out with an organization, a nonprofit organization, to do the operational side. In terms of action, there may, I don't know, but there may or may not be district-owned land or buildings that might be suitable for childcare. Again, that redevelopment, there's funding probably coming available, you know, in the next number of months that could facilitate redevelopment, and the district could either operate childcare facilities themselves or work with other local organizations on a contract basis or in a collaborative way to develop and operate new facilities. And then also supporting particularly capital grant applications. Increasingly, the provincial government is making municipalities sort of the focal point and sometimes the only eligible applicant for grant applications for this type of work. And so there may be opportunities to work in partnership with other organizations or for the municipality itself to apply for capital grants for development of facilities. And finally, just, you know, some advocacy recommendations, both in terms of at the community level, making the Lilawet Childcare Plan available to other organizations that might be interested in developing childcare in your community, engaging with them in terms of encouraging them to take a collaborative approach to meeting community needs. One of the concerns that I would raise is that because of staff shortages, you really want organizations to be working together, because if you build a big new childcare facility in the District of Lilawet with provincial and/or federal dollars and start trying to staff it, there's a real risk that you'll just draw staff out of the existing facilities and result in them closing, and you'll kind of be at a net zero because you will, you'll close those other facilities in order to open a new one. And so it's really important, I think, to think about that carefully when new facilities are developing, what the staffing strategy is, and to try to encourage organizations to work together to attract new staff and to have a training strategy so that you're training new staff into those positions as well. And then, of course, there's certainly always advocacy work that local governments can do in terms of working with other levels of government around the challenges of meeting childcare needs in rural communities. Staffing shortages are certainly an example of that. Childcare providers and staff in childcare facilities are chronically underpaid for, in comparison to similar types of work in other sectors, and there's a shortage of them across the entire sector, across the province. And so there's a fair bit of work to be done to ensure that they are able to, you know, you're able to attract people to working and to work in those positions and in those roles in that field. So that's a very, very quick, high-level summary of what's in the report. I know that you've been provided with a copy of the draft report, and I'm quite happy to take any questions that you have about the report itself or about my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Burrell. Council, questions, comments? Councillor Weeb?
I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you can answer them. Number one, I know you can answer. On page 18, you have that chart of the amount of funding District of Lilawet, BC Average, and Squamish. And I'm thinking the BC Average one should be 69,995, but that's just me. I could be wrong.
I think you're looking at the, are you looking at the average income?
Well, I don't know. In the paragraph above, socio-economic context?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so it says 53,077, the median household. And then Squamish-Lilawet Regional is 78,581, and BC's at 69,95, but the chart below doesn't show it that way, so I wasn't sure if they were supposed to.
Oh, you're absolutely right. That's just a typo in the report, so thank you for telling that.
Okay, my other question is, do you know if TRU provides training for whichever level you need to work in a daycare or a preschool or whichever? I know some of the training comes within the facility, but do you know if TRU offers that?
So what's required is an early childhood education certificate, and TRU does offer that in Kamloops. But as far as I know, they don't offer it out in any of the regions. So it is available in Kamloops. It also is generally available as an online program through a couple of different online schools in the province.
Okay, and my final question, I am on the committee, I guess, through the SLRD that would be dealing with childcare and the Ministry of whomever when we get to UBCM things. Can I share some of these statistics that you've put in the report?
Yes, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I just ask you to unshare your screen for this portion of discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Weeb. Councillor Leach?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Anne. Thank you for the report. It's, it's not surprising to me what's been in this report because, as my fellow councillors know, I did sit on the board as a community liaison and a parent for a few years with the Teaklit Daycare and Preschool, as well, they have a bit of a background in the, as I went to school, I was a nanny for a number of years and also went to school for Aboriginal early childhood. And this report is great. It's a great start, I think. And I would like council to consider my, some of the recommendations in this report tonight. I did have a brief conversation with Councillor Weeb because she sits on the Myizaki Heritage House as a chair. And when we were at UBCM two years ago, yeah, two years ago, yeah, I had the opportunity to go down to the Vancouver Japanese Language School and Hall for another project that we were, I was working with on. And I actually got a tour of the building, and they, it's a heritage building that they actually added on to expand their cult, like some cultural programs and support the Japanese community there. However, in the heritage part of the building, they actually, I think, I'm not sure if they got full grant funding or if they just fundraised in the community, but they actually turned it into a daycare. And it was phenomenal. It was, it was, and I honestly think we have a really great facility of the Myizaki Heritage House that is not actually being run to its full potential, being used to its full potential and the purpose. I know, sitting as a liaison for the Myizaki Heritage House, that the board is burnt out and kind of with COVID on top of it, they were burnt out before COVID, and now with the COVID, they're not opening again for a second year. And I don't really know that the board has a clear vision of what they want to do going forward. They've been presented with a few different options and ideas tossed around in the community. So I would like us to consider get, to get staff looking at this spot as maybe an opportunity if we could leverage the UBCM grant, because I believe there's an infrastructure grant for, to renovate district-owned properties for childcare spaces. I think this plan was step, is like stage one of it. We need to have this in place in order to go to the next grant. But not saying that the district should run the daycare. I think we should look at going in partnership with an established group, whether it be the Teaklit Daycare and Preschool or Yellowhead Community Services. Both of those particular groups have years of experience in this. And I know Yellowhead Community Services does actually do, do some schooling and training with their staff to get certified while they're working. So I just, it's something I'd like to explore. I'd like to kind of know how you guys feel about this. There's clear reference in this plan of, you know, why we do have so many job openings in the community and why they're not being filled, as well as long-term, if we want to retain really good professionals, we do need to have some sort of plan in place because the people who are filling higher, not just blue-collar jobs, but higher roles in the community, if they do have a young family, they, it is hard, and if they have a young family and don't have the parents or the aunts or the uncles to look after the kids, they will leave, and we will lose that resource as well. Anyway, that's just where I wanted to go with this conversation, so I'd like to hear your opinions.
Thank you, Councillor Leach. Are you asking for the opinion of Ms. Burrell?
Anyone, everyone at this table.
Fine, then I'll let other councillors in on this. Councillor Howe, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burrell, for this document. It's incredibly insightful and a lot of information that I think we kind of knew, but now it's been validated, which is incredibly helpful. And thank you to Councillor Leach for your insight. And I know that this is something that you, you've been talking about for quite some time. I remember having these discussions and you bringing this to the table quite some time ago. So thank you for not letting this go. I support what you're saying. I think that these suggestions are a really great option. When you mentioned them the first time, I thought it was a great option. So I'm glad that they're back. I did read that, you know, the province or the federal government, they're looking at, was it 1 billion? 30 billion, 30 billion. The federal government made a 30 billion commitment over the next five years to move toward a national childcare program. So I'm thinking time is a bit of the essence. And so being that there are some really great ideas already being passed on to the table through council, I'm wondering if, I see that staff's suggestion is that strategies be considered when the municipal objectives are reviewed and updated at end of 2021. Does that mean that, so this question's for staff, actually. Does that mean that we would wait until 2021 to put this back on the table for discussion? Or is this something that we could maybe embark on a little bit sooner, knowing the timeline?
If I may answer. So the idea of the recommendation is that some of these things we can maybe roll right into what we're already doing as staff. For example, the OCP Housing Needs Study, rezoning, looking at all of our fees and charges. So all these things are already in progress. And so this, this report provides some really good information that we can look through it through this lens as well and go, is this fee really necessary? Should we be restricting childcare in this zone, or should we be trying to open it up? So how we can work it in, we will, if council asks us to. To take on any new initiative to try to build deep partnerships with organizations To take on any new initiative to try to build, uh, deep partnerships with organizations or try to tackle the problem as a community at this point. Staff don't have the capacity with what we've got on our plate right now to do that. Um, so what we're thinking is we spend the time leading up to the end of this year, which is only six months away now, to, to, to just start working with what we've got now, do the advocacy, that would be very much actually with council to do, to do the advocacy. But where we can work things in, that will be sort of learning for us as well. So that when we have the conversation later this year, we can provide feedback as staff as to where we've spot opportunities in the processes and projects. And then we can really dig into as council and senior staff, how some of these things that are going to take more work might work into our work plan for next year. Um, also note that a lot of these funding programs are currently closed, but we're waiting to hear when they open. So we'll be keeping a keen eye on that. We, as staff, receive, uh, weekly emails about funding opportunities. Plus, we have a grant writer on contract as well who likes to shoot us midnight emails going, money! So those things will be on our mind throughout the months as well. So if we see something come up, if there's a timeline on it that concerns us about trying to meet that timeline, we'll bring that to council and go, all right, so do we push something off to try to meet this timeline or do we just talk about it and go for it when we have the time to actually do a good job at it? Hope I've answered your question.
Councillor Howe?
Yes, that will be fine for now. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Leach, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add in there too, uh, my suggestion that I'm saying, I'm not expecting this to be shoved into the work pile this year. I think it needs to be consideration. There needs to be conversations that, that, um, are had, like, you know, I'm, I'm putting this out there on the table without it actually going to a Maizaki Board meeting, like, they still do have a, uh, uh, contract or an under, uh, MOU or whatever that is with the district, right? So I think it's just something to consider as, you know, as the OCP and the, the next year's strategic planning plays in. And just to see how far of a priority this could be, because it could, we have the potential to do something really great here. We're, you know, because this building is not being used to its full function, I just would really like it to be front of mind when we're doing the planning on this. Um, and then, you know, as it says in the report, to have, you know, maybe not necessarily it can, uh, something shelf-ready for grant, but have the idea and the base there for something to build up if and when that time comes, right? So I'm definitely thinking longer term with this, not overnight.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Leach. Just before I let anybody else go, I think, uh, that aspect regarding the Maizaki House would be considered under the paragraph two, would it not? In terms of staff directing policy action and advocacy strategies? Would that not be covered there? Or does it have to be specifically mentioned, Mr. Taylor? And the second, the second one is, is as Mr. Denegar has said, we council can also take it upon ourselves to become advocates for some of these strategies in terms of discussions. And I think we should continue to do that. And I know some of you council members have been doing that. And this shouldn't mean you should stop. You should advance it. And thereby giving, uh, staff, uh, a bit more time. So, Mr. Denegar next, and then I'll go to the other two councillors.
Thanks. To first answer your question there, under the second clause of the proposed resolution. Um, yeah, staff would be considering this in any discussions we have about community spaces, including the Maizaki House. And back to my earlier comments about things we can do in the meantime, depending on grant timing, is while we could tackle it in very similar fashion as the shelter with the Lilwet Friendship Centre, where we use our resources and our ability as a local government to go after the funding. But the actual work in running it and even the grant application itself very much would rest with a third-party organization that's expert in it. We're not childcare experts, but we have access to some money. So that's where we can do some partnering.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Denegar. Councillor Hoffel, next.
Thank you and good evening. Um, yeah, so I, I think that that's a good idea that Councillor Leach has. And I think that, you know, we used to have one that the district actually ran out of the, uh, rec center years ago when my kids were young and they used to go there after school. It was a great program because then they could go use a pool, they could go skating, they could, you know, do that after-school program and it was really, really well, uh, run. And, um, and I think that we should also, we should also include in policy strategies to encourage employers to also facilitate childcare. Cause these employers, and I'm not speaking for interior health, but I look at interior health, we've got a ton of people working there. There's, uh, lots of people have, have young kids and we often have casual issue, issues because we have no daycare. So I think that we really got to look to employers to aid and assist us in making this, uh, come to fruition. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Hoffel. Councillor Weeb?
Yes, um, I will, I, I love the suggestion of the Maizaki House personally. I, I think it's, uh, a great place donated to the district by a wonderful, caring man who probably would just think this was phenomenal that we were using it as a daycare facility. And the grounds itself to add playground equipment or whatever are just unique. So I have no problems taking that. We're, we're having a strategic planning meeting in July and I will definitely put it on the table. And I would like to just caution council that when we are out there doing advocacy for all of these things, to remember it was either Salmon Arm or Sycamuse that had the facility built and not enough workers to open it. So that we really have to stay on top of, you know, um, making sure we have trained licensed people to run different facilities that we want to do, whether they're infants or after-school or what they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Weeb. I think that, uh, Ms. Burrell has, has alluded to that. And speaking of Ms. Burrell, you've heard the comments and queries. Have you got anything that you can add in terms of, uh, advice or cautions with what you've heard us talk about so far?
I don't think I have anything, any sort of advice or cautions. I know that there are some things in the works and there are some organizations in the community that have run childcare facilities in the past. Um, we are all, I think, aware of them because I've heard them mentioned, um, already in your discussions. I know that the, uh, school district is, uh, and it's in the report that they are in the process of setting up an after-school program. Um, so that's in the works. And, uh, Yellowhead has, has extensive experience in childcare and they've, they've indicated quite a strong interest in working on setting up a childcare facility. And so I would encourage you to reach out to those organizations, um, to the Friendship Centre as well, who've expressed some interest as well. Um, because they have, they have quite a lot of experience in terms of, uh, applying for funding and setting up and operating childcare facilities. And so really relying on, on those organizations that have that background, um, I think will carry you a long way.
Thank you, Ms. Burrell. Any more question, queries, comments from council? Once again, Ms. Burrell, oh, Councillor Howe?
Sorry, it came to me, so I thought I'd ask. Um, Ms. Burrell, what are other, in, in your experience, what are other communities doing in order to push back on that challenge of finding, daycare staff with the proper education, the ECE education and attracting them to that profession as opposed to, you know, moving into the schools? How are they combating that, that challenge?
Well, I think it's, um, there are a variety of things that you can do. You know, there's recruitment strategies around trying to draw people from other communities. You have, you have some, um, lifestyle amenities that you can offer and things like that. Um, I know some approaches, um, that organizations have taken have included, um, you know, doing some in-house training. And so, um, the, the ECE field has the ability, uh, to sort of step through a variety of steps. And so as long as you have, you know, you can start a program relatively small with one qualified, fully qualified staff and bring along a second or third or fourth staff who are, um, sort of in training positions and, um, helping them to get access to training and then moving them through those training steps. I think that's a really, uh, smart strategy in terms of getting people in your community that are, you know, interested in the field. Uh, I think the other advantage is that new funding, new, new operational funding provides an opportunity to increase the wage rates for childcare providers. Typically, uh, these new grant programs, um, have a clause in them that require you to pay a certain, uh, amount per hour or they have a benchmark. Um, and so, um, there's risks, obviously, that you're going to pull people out of other, or other, uh, facility. Um, but I think, you know, engaging in conversations with those facilities about helping them to increase their, their, um, attraction strategies as well can help with that. Um, or using them as training facilities that can order sort of bridge as you're developing your program, things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Burrell, on behalf of council and of staff, really appreciate the work you've done with this report. It's certainly, uh, obvious that you've advanced this initiative for us and we can feel and taste it coming. So thank you for your good works.
Well, you're welcome, and I hope that it's really helpful for the community. I think, um, I think there's lots of opportunity there and I wish you all the best in moving this forward.
Thank you. Okay. Therefore, staff has a recommendation that the District of Lilwet Childcare Plan Draft for Review, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, be received for information and that staff be directed to incorporate the policy action and advocacy, advocacy strategies outlined in the report into the existing projects of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two municipal objectives when possible. And further, that these strategies be considered when the municipal objectives are reviewed and updated at the end of twenty-twenty-one. Someone move? Councillor Howe, second, Councillor Leach? Any further discussion? We'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimous? Thank you. We'll move to item six point two, council representatives appointed to committees and boards.
Okay, if you're ready to start, um, this is a rather large report and I'm sure you've read the whole thing. I read the summary. So we can do this really quickly. If you're up for it, we could actually just go through and just, uh, look at it by exception. So if anyone wants something changed or wants to be considered for a role on one of these bodies, um, we can just work through it like that. Throw your hands up and the mayor can try to moderate. Or we can go one by one. But seeing as we're almost halfway through the meeting, I'm going to suggest that we do it by exception. Nodding heads, shaking? No, yeah, no?
Okay.
Don't know? Okay. So, uh, looking at the list which is attached there, um, page forty-one in your agenda package. These are all the groups the council has managed to get itself involved with. It's a lot longer than the list that I first saw when I came here. I think there were about half as many. But apparently things have been happening, which is great. It means you're passionate about being involved in everything. I don't know how you have a life outside of this. So if there's anything here that shows as inactive society, now's a good time to say, to confirm if, if, if you're aware of it, that it is inactive. And you don't want to be associated with any, anymore until it becomes active. This is to me the whole, so if, if you're comfortable with it, you can unmute and just free for all it.
Thank you, Mr. Denegar. Before we move forward, the Lilwet Health Planning Working Group was something that cropped up lately. I'm on it. Uh, Councillor Leach was on it as well. I'd like to see Councillor Hoffel become part of it. It's becoming more intense, obviously, because of the clinic issues and the, uh, physician type, physician, um, issues that we're going to be having from this summer through the next year. Uh, it'll probably then fade away after that. Uh, I feel that myself, I'm not that interested in getting involved into the, the BEMH, uh, works of meeting regularly with IHA. I'd like to work locally, uh, with our own council members and with our own local people. Uh, and knowing what we want and understand our need before we sit down with interior health. But I think that Councillor Hoffel can help with her background and work with interior health that, uh, she can get on that battleship and maybe, uh, get a couple of steerings that will slowly go one way or another. That's my take on the first page. Okay, who is next? Councillor Hoffel?
Thank you. So if I could speak to that, yeah, I, I would like to take a more active role in the healthcare committees. I, I agree. There's a lot going on at the clinic and the Lilwet Hospital and also the Litton Hospital. And obviously, as I'm on site, I think I could be an asset to both these committees. So I did speak with councillor Weeb, as I'm her ultimate on the Thompson Nicola Regional District Hospital Board as well, and expressed my desire to attend a meeting in the near future and to start receiving some of the information from that committee. So thanks, councillor Weeb, for looking into that for me and you'll let me know, I'm sure. And, uh, yes, and I also spoke with Maribasi about the Lilwet Health Planning Working Group and would like to take a more active role in that committee as well. So I do realize, you know what, I work full-time and it can be a challenge to attend daytime meetings for me, but you know, our medical clinic and hospital is a priority in our community right now. And so I will just do my best to do what I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leach?
Um, yeah, and just speaking to the Lilwet Healthcare Planning Group, um, I know I'm not listed on here, but I am on the registry as being part of it. I actually would like to get off of it because I cannot make any of the meetings at, at all. Like I've, I think I've been able to make one since its inception and it's definitely not what I thought it was to begin with. Um, so I would really love if councillor Hoffel took my place.
Okay, that works out pretty good. Anybody else? Councillor Weeb?
Um, yes, the Gold Country Communities Society. I know it originally was councillor Howe's and then there were some difficulties with childcare and a vehicle. So it ended up back with me. Um, we can't have two representatives there. We just both can't vote. But they have had some board changes over the last few months and I'm actually now a signing authority person for them. But I do have an email out to Marcy Down as to whether I would like to just sit there as the treasurer and go when I need to go to do whatever at the bank. And possibly if councillor Howe would like to do the meetings, that would be wonderful. I think they need, um, some younger, more. Marcy's got some great ideas and I, I think there's a few too many old folks sitting on that board.
Well, you said it, not us.
I, I.
What say you, councillor Howe?
Um, okay, I would, I, I really would like to sit on that board. Um, with what's going on right now in the personal life, I am concerned about my ability to, um, be available for those meetings. Um, so I, as much as I absolutely would love it, uh, at this moment in time, I don't know that I could do it the kind of justice I would like to and that it deserves.
Okay, thank you, councillor Howe. Anyone else?
So disappointed.
You, keep, keep your guns ready. Okay, um, if I could say, just from my perspective, and I know as, as, um, Mr. Denegar has alluded to, we had a bit of a short list and it's been growing like ad hoc. And, and certainly, obviously, when there's certain issues that come into the community that require attention, and I think a couple of them are, obviously, is the, the criminality that we've got to deal with, you know, security and safety, the people we've been dealing with, which is essentially making sure that the RCMP have their, their detachment up to speed and that's been going well. Then the, you know, the third aspect of a, of a healthy community is should have enough facilities such as hospitals and clinics. That's a big one that dropped into our lap, obviously, a very, of, of late. And I think that, that those, those are some of the issues that I really feel we've got to concentrate on as a council and, and we can help each, help each other with it. Whereas some of the others, you know, are they of, of the value? I believe they all are in the long term, but I, I feel that we've got a few short-term issues that we really got to deal with and that's why you don't see my name on there, but it doesn't mean that I'm the only one that has to be involved in this. I can certainly need support from the rest of you guys and I've got some ideas on how we can do it. In other words, I'm saying we're probably looking at a couple more committees or, 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 or the like that we should participate and be part of. And I'm a big proponent of small numbers of commit, in the committee, not large ones. So that's my piece. Uh, Counselor Hoffel, go ahead.
I wouldn't take that to a vote. But anyways, I would like to, so the Mile Zero Housing Society, inactive society, really inactive. I think that, I, you know what, I have a strong Lilawat Housing Society is very well established. And I think anything that we needed for housing, I think that we could bounce off them and I think they would be proactive in supporting that. But the Mile Zero Housing Society, I don't know, I think we need to... Terrible.
No, I, it makes perfect sense, as I said, what BC Housing is telling us, that we had to, we have to align with the society that has the capability, especially in terms of affordable housing and the like, they've got to be able to operate, maintain it. A new society will not, especially one that will not achieve the grant funding that we're going to need. So I'm a diplomatically, Mr. Denegar, you're going to have to determine how we can roll that thing up, so that, roll that society up and, and thank the people for their involvement, but an explanation in terms of, of why we have to move on to a larger society. What do I do? Counselor Leach?
Yeah, and just to speak to the Miyazaki House Society, I honestly feel that I would be better as a paying member who volunteered my time than as a council liaison. I don't think they need a council liaison at the table at all. So I think we could very politely
Is that, so is that okay to do, Mr. Denegar? I think it is, eh?
So this is from the Miyazaki?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll send a letter, a nice one.
Yeah, we'll still hear from them, I'm sure. They have everyone's phone number.
Yeah, and just because you're not officially on one of these organizations doesn't mean that you're still not an elected official who is reachable by everyone at every time, right? The level of formality in which you're related to these organizations doesn't have to exist to this extent in order to be supportive.
Okay, Counselor Hoffel, you're next.
So when that happens, when, when Counselor Leach says that we're not gonna, she's not going to be the council rep on a Miyazaki House and just be a member, then do we still hear about it? Do they still report on it? Or would they not report on it because it's just a personal choice to be a member of a society?
Typically wouldn't be reported unless there's something major, in which case, you know, if it's major, you may report on what happens in your life because you are an elected representative. But there's no stature in being a member of that organization, right? There's no official capacity, so you'd certainly report on it less.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Weave?
Okay, I have two things, I don't know who's at my door. As soon as I sit in this chair, all the animals want in or out. Um, the Northern Statlium Intergovernmental Relations Working Group. It hasn't been active for two years due to some personal issues by Jeanette, which is understandable. But I believe she's moved on into a different role at the SLRD. I don't know that they are going to pick this back up or not, but I do feel that if they do, that Counselor Howe, if she's willing, might be a better fit than me. Depending on who the new person is and if they even pick it up or whether it just gets pushed away.
Okay, if, if I could make a comment there, those are good points. I think it's essentially fell by the wayside because basically it, it was Jeanette that was spearheading it from the SLRD and essentially Lilawat Tribal Council slowly dropped away from it, but the Teklet, Teklet were essentially driving that process. In the interim, obviously, what's happened is these Teklet have left the tribal council group. So then you've got something that's essentially carved out of this thing. And I think we should just, my suggestion is that we just sit by, stand by, and if there's any contact that anyone has with the Teklet, that they should just determine what the intent might be. I can say safely say that the tribal council hasn't created an interest yet and I'm sure if they do, they'll probably let Mr. Denegar know fairly quickly. So that's something I think we should just put on standby and be available if it, if it does come and if, if the, the various First Nation community want to re-initiate it. What say you guys? Counselor Weave?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just, like I say, I don't know where it's going. And the other one I wanted to address was the Thompson Nicola Hospital Board. Two of us can't go to the same meeting. We're only allowed one representative because we also have Area A and B there, but I will make arrangements to have the paperwork sent on to, you know, whatever the minutes are or the agendas so that Counselor Hoffel has some reading material for her spare time.
Okay, thank you. So that's in the constitution then, that, that only one member, given the fact that we have a bit of a crisis in our community with regard to clinic physicians, so on and so forth? Okay?
She, Counselor Hoffel is an alternate, so she can go if I don't.
Yeah.
So that's the way it fits, but I can share the paperwork with her.
Right.
And then she, she can give me her insight and I can beak off.
Oh, no, that's good, I'm just thinking, the TNRD, when you look at the number of people that are attending that thing, really? Huh? You've got the small little communities and much, we're, you know, we're a hundred mile house size, so maybe we should have a bit different representation. I might speak to Ken Christian about that, just to be, just to be nosy. Anyway, thank you both counselors for looking out for that. I just want to make sure that, that Lilawat gets the attention that it needs and we're certainly going to need it on all levels, right? To the Ministry of Health as well as the College of Physicians. So anything you guys can do to highlight those issues is something we're going to need politically going forward. Thank you both, appreciate it. Anything else from anybody? One thing that's done, obviously, is we've, I'll come to you, Counselor Howe, it's brought the list out. We're not gonna, I don't believe that we can make definitive decisions on most of it. Some of it we can in terms of a person, person's desire, but I think it's going to have to become a bit more of a, of a living document than, you know, once a year, yah, 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 because priorities are changing in our community fairly fast. And I think what I like is you guys are okay to jump around and, and get some, get things done. And I think that's what we should do with these council appointments. Thank you. Counselor Howe?
Yes, thank you. So leading off from that, the Lilawat District Chamber of Commerce is inactive right now. However, I, as you were saying, Mr. Bussie, I think we, I think it would do us justice just to leave it as is. I'm sure coming out of COVID, there'll be a comeback of that group. I have no idea what that board will look like. But perhaps for now, just leave it. And then the Statlium Echo Resources Steering Committee, there was so much confusion around this committee, what it's for, where it's going, who sits on the board? Um, what are the meetings? I think that, that because it's showing inactive, perhaps it would be helpful to just remove me from this group until we learn more. I mean, unless Mr. Denegar or yourself, Mr. Bussie, have heard anything further about this group?
No, we haven't, and I think you're, you're probably wise, we should just stay low and silent on it because there is a bit of a politics that's happening on that side. We certainly shouldn't get ourselves mired in that. So you've got a good point. The one thing you brought up, and I think it's worth us at least acknowledging it, you know, from my perspective and all the communities I've been, the, the Chamber of Commerce is an integral, significant part of a community and I'm, I'm a little bit discouraged that we don't have a greater active role. Aren't they the ones that put on the, the Canada Day celebrations? And you keep in mind, the vast majority of municipalities are canceling those in, in light of what's happening. But I didn't discuss that with, with Mr. Denegar, are you? Because I'm pretty sure that the Chamber of Commerce are the ones that would put that on. Yeah, Counselor Howe? Uh, Counselor Hoffel, sorry, what do you say?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, it is the Chamber of Commerce and the Historical Society because the museum, it's held at Downton Park. So the museum kind of organizes that, advertises for it and then the chamber comes along and that was basically Bob Sheridan that did all that. Bringing in all the hot dogs and that kind of stuff, maybe, yeah, perhaps Ben could clarify.
Okay, Mr. Gare, can you enlighten us a little bit?
I can on that actually, because I was one of the people that was involved with that for many years. I think the chamber's role, the chamber was one of the organizations that played an integral role in, in having, in, in putting that celebration on each year. The last couple of years that we did it, quite frankly, the chamber's role was pretty minimal. I, I kind of, as a, as a district employee, kind of picked up the role that I had as a chamber director and worked with, with the other organizations and we, we kind of carried on from there. So that's a, that's an event that, that if the chamber was unable to sort of pick up the ball on, I think we could, with just some, some volunteer help from some of the people that were involved before. The BiLO was the, was the, sort of the key player there with the, putting the, all the food and so forth and the barbecue that they did. So I'm sure Bob would be, would be, not this year likely, but in future years would be happy to, to have this thing resurrected and I'm sure we can find some other volunteers to work along with BiLO and the Historical Society to, to put that on again, whether there's, if there's a chamber. Well, hopefully there will be a chamber to help us out, but if not, I think I could round up a few bodies to, to, to help on behalf of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Gare. Counselor Leach?
Yeah, just to kind of maybe give a little bit of insight, I was speaking to the chamber president, I think Mrs. Vogel, I believe it is now. And we were, I was asking her, like, what's going on with the chamber? And, and her response to me was basically that the members don't show up for the meetings and they are having trouble getting membership. So she's struggling with that right now. So if there's any chamber members, I'll do a little pitch for her because she has a lot of spunk and a lot of energy and I know that she's got some great ideas, but it really does take a team to, to push these things forward and, and I would hate to see it just die because I know in the past the chambers done some pretty remarkable things for the community, so, yeah.
That's good, yeah, I agree with you fully and, and that's the disappointing part of it. What my, and I've been on many chambers and, and what I've been used to myself in the past, that normally in a municipality, the chamber carries a lot of weight and it's all the businesses. And we individual residential taxpayers get to kind of hide behind them on coattails in terms of saying, hey, you know, certain things that the, the village, municipality or city are doing, we're really worried about not the best interest and usually the chamber is the one that, that sits with the, with the council of the day and, and/or the staff of the day and say, wait a minute here, you know, what are you doing to our community? I, I just feel that's an integral, important part that's missing and I certainly hope somehow we can, you know, support and fire them up to get them, get them going again, because I agree, good chambers do some good stuff for our communities. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Denegar, has anybody taken notes? And because I don't have them in terms of the changes and I don't intend to read them out.
Yes, I've taken notes, little markings all over the paper here. One last check with council, are there any groups that you want to be removed from that you haven't already mentioned simply because you feel overloaded or the group isn't a good fit for you? Last chance. It's not actually your last chance, it's a recommendation that goes to the next council meeting.
There you go. See, bureaucracy, that is better.
But if, if you'd like to get it in the resolution now, you know what, this just isn't a good fit for me or I'm feeling overwhelmed, please have a look through, look for your name and let me know and my pen is ready. We have ten seconds.
What do you want? I don't want 10 seconds of dead air.
All right, that, all right, everybody likes what they're on, except what they've said, okay. So the recommended resolution was to be a big, long list of the groups and the names and that, but I'm taking notes, I think we all know what happened here. So see if I can do a quick review. We're removing Counselor Leach but adding Hoffel to the Lilawat Health Planning Working Group. Miles or Housing Society, we will inform them that Counselor Hoffel is leaving and I'll talk to them about their future. Miyazaki Housing Society, we'll send them a nice letter and talk to them about Counselor Leach leaving as the representative, but we will continue to support them in other ways. I see that Counselor Howe will be removed until we hear more from Statlium Echo Resources. And for the Thompson Nicola Regional District Hospital Board, it will only be Weave in attendance, but she will have Counselor Hoffel on speakerphone the entire time. That's the, does that, does that work? I'm just trying to find a compromise here.
Yeah.
Otherwise, all group memberships will remain the same as listed in the table there. So if council agrees to that, you can pass the resolution as presented and we'll have it all written up nicely for the next council meeting.
Okay. Counselor Leach, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, Jeremy, is this the caveat that we're not allowed to complain that we're overloaded now?
I wasn't going to say it, but well said.
Okay, any other further comments from Mr. Denegar's dissertation? No, great, okay, I need someone to move that the following council reps be appointed to boards, committee and societies has been outlined by our discussions and the listing from Mr. Denegar. Who will so move? Counselor Hoffel, second Counselor Weave? Call the question, all those in favor? Carried, thank you, well done, folks. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.3, 2021 Regular Council Meeting Schedule Amendment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council directed staff to make some amendments to the council procedure by law to remove the prescribed times and dates of regular council meetings. That received first three readings at the last regular council meeting and will be going for consideration of adoption this meeting. That received first three readings at the last regular council meeting and will be going for consideration of adoption this meeting. In anticipation of adoption, we have brought forward some, some suggestions for the remainder of the year. Council meetings, it counts as direction. We've brought forward one with one meeting a month and one with two meeting a month, meetings a month from July through December. That is really only affects the October and November meetings as July, August, September and December all already had one meeting. The list before you has meetings switched to Tuesdays with a five P M. call time. This was suggested by the mayor as the doodle poll I sent out resulted in absolutely zero consensus. And I will pass it over to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, council members. Counselor Weeb?
I am curious if staff could answer how much extra work it is to do. I guess, how much extra work there is from doing two council meetings in a month to doing one? Because I'm thinking whatever would be in the second one is going to be in the first one. So if somebody in, from staff could answer that for me.
Kevin, looks like he was ready, but I'll take it over. All staff are welcome to jump in if you have other thoughts on this. There's the reporting side of things, which takes roughly the same amount of work. Doesn't matter when the report is, we have to do the work that leads to that. But there's also the assembly time of putting those reports into the agenda and ordering them and all the processing that goes on with that, but does add an overhead to it. So by having more meetings, you're adding overhead on top of the actual report creation. And as well as the disruption factor, and then whatever project we're working on comes to a grinding halt when it comes time to start preparing the agenda package. So twice a month now, everything gets put on hold for three or four days as we prepare for the agenda and then stress out the entire weekend, panic on Monday, and then look like we're cool, calm and collected come the meeting. So by having less meetings, there's a more contiguous three week period in time where staff are able to focus in on the projects that they're doing. So it's, it's, the overhead's a bit, but it's more about the focus time.
Thank you, Mr. Denegar. That's my, before I carry on to Mr. Taylor, from my perspective, that's what's driving me in this process more than a, from a personal note. I've watched and I've seen since we all got elected and we're running, and especially when we were running meetings in the rec center, the preparation time and unpreparation time, I just is beameth. And I really feel that we should be cognizant of the efficiency of our staff time because we've got a very aggressive strategic plan and we're even piling more on top of it. I just want staff to have more time to get the day to day work done. And if we feel, if staff feels we need a second meeting a month, they can always ad, ad hoc it. I really feel strongly, we should get our business in order and have one meeting a month. And, and, and of a time element that is more appropriate and good for them. The more we meet late in the evenings, uh, don't tell me that we're going to get good staff performance the very next day. It's just not going to happen. I've got too much experience with that. So, again, from my perspective, put aside all my personal preferences, I want staff efficient and I want to get lots of work done. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, that did cover a bunch of, of what I did want to say, just as counterpoints to that. Just to, just so the council does have the information, bylaws do take two meetings to pass. So with one meeting a month, and if we don't call a special meeting, that is a whole month to adopt a bylaw that includes zoning bylaws. So anything with where developers are coming forward that might attract the time a bit. Now, we usually do have a meeting in between first and second reading and public hearing anyways because of notification. So it shouldn't have a huge impact on that. But just so you're aware, that will protract the time it takes to pass a bylaw if those special meetings are called.
But we would want to see the business continue. So I'm quite confident all of us council members are quite willing to have a meeting whenever in order to achieve those results. I'm speaking for myself, but other council members can kick in. All right, who's next? Counselor Hoffel, you got your? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so basically what we're talking about is two meetings this year and eight meetings next year. Like, I just wonder, I understand about the workload and, and the duplication of that, but I don't know, I, I just, I'm, I'm really on the fence about this one. I think that in order for us to pass anything or get anything done, we are talking about eight meetings a year.
No, that's a valid point, but the point is, like I said, if, in order to keep the work getting done, it's more important staff gets to work. And if we have to pass policy, direction or bylaws, to be, I'm confident all of you four plus myself, I'll meet anytime in order to get that business sorted out. So away we go on. It's the, it's, to me, it's the buildup to a meeting and then tear down after the meeting that I see is so inefficient. Okay, I've spoken enough. Counselor Leach, you're next.
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Taylor. Um, so say you did need to call a special meeting, in the legislation, you need how many days in order for public notice for the meeting?
You need a minimum of twenty-four hours of public notice, or you can waive notice with the unanimous vote of council at the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Oh, the, before I go to Counselor Howe, you, you put something, Mayor, S L R D, I noticed that they waive public hearing, hearings and notices. Why don't we do, do any of that?
Public hearings can be waived, and this is a different matter. But, uh, public hearings are, uh, waiveable if if a zoning bylaw already conforms to the official community plan. So as, as part of staff's review, we bring for whether or not we believe that it is substantially conforming to the O C P. We did waive a public hearing for the bringing in of the brewery use into the industrial zone. Probably about a year ago now, we did skip that one because it did conform with the O C P.
Right, good. No, it's just that we're not afraid to meet the public. The more the public gets to know, the better off we like it. It's just to keep us all efficient. Counselor Howe, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I think, you know, in speaking to the one meeting versus two, and then having the special meetings as an option instead, should we move to only the one meeting? Um, I think a good example of the challenge around that is that we then have fairly stacked calendars to the point where even to, to decide on a day via the doodle poll that went through, it goes to show there is no consensus. We simply couldn't meet the same schedules. There just wasn't any crossover there. So I think that that, that's something to consider as representative of how easily we can get together for a special meeting. Um, I'd like to say that, yeah, for sure, hundred percent, drop of a hat, twenty-four hours notice, I'm, I'm there, but that's not really how I don't know that we could all do that. So something to consider in the process.
Thank you. Before Counselor Hoffel, Mr. Denegar, please.
Well, if, if I may, sorry, I, I don't know if my hand was up first. So one way to perhaps deal with that, and we're just chatting here, is to set a schedule for all of ourselves as though we're meeting every two weeks. But the in-between ones are tentative. So that you keep your calendar blocked off. If something comes up, we know that that's when we're going to try to have that special meeting. But we don't have to cancel these meetings. We don't have to have a schedule of regular meetings and then keep cancelling them because we're trying to put them into one meeting. We just know we're going to try for one, something comes up, a zoning bylaw needs to get done quicker. Then we go, yeah, special meeting's happening on the usual special meeting day. So it meets the legislative requirements and gives us some level of, of knowing when these things are going to be. The bigger challenge, I think, is going to be your discussion about what time the meetings start.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Howe?
Yes, I just want to clarify, this is for our term. And then when we, when, 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 I just want to make sure that we're considering next council's needs in this, in, in any policy change. So next council, they're going to be new. The, the amount of information that we had to absorb, the amount of meetings that were quite helpful to, to be participant in, in order to get that learning curve rolling ahead and build the relationships with the rest of council. It was really important, I think, to have those two meetings a month. That was an, it was an integral part of the process. And so I just want to make sure that there's a way to set this back to what we've, we have standard now to provide the opportunity for the future council to have some experience with the two, two council meetings a month. So that they can then go in eyes wide open and make the decisions in the future as to whether or not that works for them and if it makes sense. So just something I, I wanted to put out there and make sure that we're, we can do that, that that's still an option and.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, I think any council can pass any procedure or bylaw that they deem appropriate, that meets the criteria, the community charter. Is that appro, is that not so?
Oh, the bylaw will have already been passed. The schedule of regular council meetings does come to council every year around November. It does need to be reconsidered and adopted for the next year before the end of the year, which is usually the one meeting in December that we bring up forward. So every council will get a crack at setting their regular meetings yearly as they were for it. So if they do want two meetings for the first year, then that's fine. And then they can pare it down if they choose.
Okay, thank you. If, before I pass on to Counselor Hoffel, if I can say in rebuttal to Counselor Howe, I didn't find the two meetings a, a month at all useful for me. I kept seeing more and more it's staff time being chewed up on a, on a process procedure that I felt personally myself was doing little to nothing. Now, if there's down to one, that means staff has more time and certainly they can work with our new mayors or any new councillors in terms of giving guidance and so on and so forth. So I mean, it's a two edged sword, you know? Two meetings may be good for an individual, whereas one meeting was plenty for another individual. Counselor Hoffel?
Thank you. I also fear that if we miss a meeting, if one of us is sick, then that's a long time to go in between meetings if there is not another meeting called. And through the mayor, I'd like to ask, like, what do other communities do? Or is there a standard of two meetings or or, or weekly meetings or, you know, I know in the summertime, we go down to one meeting, including in, in September. And I find that's quite a ways apart, you know? So I just, yeah, I'd like to know what other communities do.
Thanks, Mr. Denegar. And after that will be Counselor Weeb.
Yeah, well, one of the, one of the examples I was looking at, well, we were actually looking at the, the bylaw change to allow for this was Kelowna. And they have six to eight meetings a month. Of course, they have a staff in the hundreds. So, yeah, if you want a full-time career in council meetings, you can, you can do that. There is really no standard, though. It depends on the community and how much activity is occurring and how they a large part of it actually is in, in what they delegate to their staff. So some communities, the councils want to decide on every single development permit, whether it's the color of paint or the style of roof. Whereas other communities go, no, we're going to do that through the delegation bylaw. And they set certain things aside where they trust that staff will work within the bounds of the policy. So we were going to be looking at that over the coming years as well as what things does council really want to get into and what things are just purely procedural. Some of them you can't get away from, but so no, there's, there's no standard.
So then can I ask you, is there any other communities that you are aware of that have only one meeting per month?
There are, yes. I can't name them off the top of my head. Regional districts are a good example. Because trying to gather that many people together is a challenge often for regional districts. And Lilowet itself has one meeting a month for four months out of each year.
Yep, and I'll be, Counselor Weeb, you're next. And that's what I was going to say, if, if for four months we have one meeting, what's the difference for the twelve in the sense that you know, summertime is just as busy in terms of, of activities around. But nevertheless, you guys know how I feel. You have your own personal feelings. And as I say, I'm driven by getting staff to do more work that's more efficient, that gains us more progress. Counselor Weeb, go ahead.
Yes, I know that Whistler allot's one day a month. They have their committee of the whole meeting on that day. They do everything during the daylight hours. So they have their committee of the whole, they have their closed council meeting, they have their regular council meeting, and then they all go out for dinner and drinks and get to know each other. So, and they do that once a month. They take one day, everybody takes the day off work or whatever they're doing and that's the way they schedule everything for the one day.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb. And I'm going to interject before Counselor Howe. You say me, I bit my tongue. I didn't want to bring that up because I was aware of the Whistler thing too. And it's always something that irked me. Whenever we finish our council meetings at the rec center, I come out of there and say, wouldn't it be nice if all of us councillors got together and had a nice draft beer and a sandwich? But it's nine o'clock and everything's rolled up and closed. So, you know, it is that camaraderie, I think, that we're missing. And I'm sincere about that. I really feel that, you know, we have some good, hard, slogging, tough meetings and we should all get together and sit around the table and have some laughs and, and imbibe a little bit and, and have some great sandwiches. Okay. Who, I forgot who's next. Counselor Howe?
Okay, so you know, I would, I would love to be able to do these meetings during the day. And I'm sure Counselor Hoffel would as well and the rest of us. But many people have day jobs and we need to consider who wants to run next council. Do we want it to be people who only have nighttime jobs or shift work or, you know, those who are retired? Or do we want this to be like an inclusive council option where we're not scaring away younger people who want to be able to, to, to run for council and be a part of these meetings? If they're during the day, they might just write off the opportunity in its entirety. And some people just simply can't afford to take a day off once a week or once a month. It's just, it's just not an option for them or they're new in their positions and they simply don't have that. That is just off the table. So you know, when we're thinking about our, how open is, is this opportunity that we're making for people in the future at, you know, perhaps that's not the best, the best option. For us specifically, this council? Again, if, when we move into, when we move into physical meetings where we can actually be present in the same space, I, you know, I'd love to see more people present at those council meetings. And it's going to be an awful challenge if there's a whole segment of people that can't come there because they have to work. So just some things to think about when we consider the times of day that we're going to have these meetings. And, you know, who's, who do we want at the table in the future?
Great. Thank you, Counselor Howe. Before I go to Counselor Weeb, I'm going to say, remember, and I've learned this from staff. And I didn't realize that because if you remember the first set of meetings we had when we became elected, our staff kind of looked at us with a bit of horror and said, what are they doing? We were, we were all essentially talking to the group in the, in the, in the audience. And that's not what we're supposed to do. I assumed it was, it isn't. These meetings are for us and for staff and for staff to be efficient. So I take your point there. I used to think like that too. But legally, or let's say from the local government act, the community charter, these meetings are for us. And I believe since we're taping everything, people can look at these meetings and participate if they want. And yeah, unfortunately, we should accommodate as much as we can. And I think that's why that five P M. schedule is there for people that are working. But at the same time, keep in mind, especially what's driving me is the staff time. It's more important for this community, I feel, that staff gets more work done so that we get a lot more work done in the term limits that we have. So therefore, if people want to participate, they've got to work around us rather than we work around them. I'm talking about the public. I've just changed completely on that. Okay. Counselor Weeb, I promise I won't pontificate anymore. That's it for me. You guys know how passionate I am and I got to watch it because I'll be turning you guys off. Counselor Leach, go ahead.
All right, thanks. Um, I just also wanted to, before I, I start, I wanted to just talk to Counselor Howe about the people participating. Honestly, it wouldn't matter what time of day it is or what day it's on. People are only going to show up if there's something on the agenda that they, that they hold as a priority. And with us having the meetings recorded. Um, and um, with us having the meetings recorded, the folks that are interested. They honestly, I've, I've spoken to them, I'm not just assuming this. They like to have the link to go back and watch it at their leisure when they have a time. And it's just, and then they can give feedback when they need to. Um, so I don't think that that needs to be a consideration of the schedule. And um, I can live with the five o'clock start time, although I would still like to have it during the day. Um, because I, I mean, I, I do work, I do juggle a lot of different things. Um, but for me personally, I would make. The council meetings a priority and take the day off. We know about them well enough in advance. A year in advance, if we adopt them by, by November, that we have ample time to take those days off. Um, but that's just my personal feeling. And. That being said, I would like to try for the one day a month. And if it's not working, I feel like we could bring it back and, and um. And do the two, the two meetings. That's where I'm kinda sitting right now. I just feel like we need. We need, need to try something different because definitely Mondays aren't working and definitely seven o'clock start times aren't working, so I'm open.
Thanks, Counselor Leach. Counselor Hoffel, go ahead.
I'm going with the two out of three ain't bad here because I like the five o'clock starts. I like the Tuesday starts. But I still believe in two meetings and I agree with, with Counselor Howe in that. With an election next year, I think we, you know, we need to, I think it's our due diligence to make it. Possible for all members of our community to be able to run for office. And I think by having meetings during the day, I mean, that's either twelve meetings a year. So that's twelve days off. Well, that's over two weeks. That's most people's basic vacation. Every single day of their vacation, they would either have to take it off as vacation leave or. Not get paid for that. And, and lots of people can't afford that. And I think in doing it during the day. Um, we will exclude a lot of people. And I know that you're saying that it is just for us, but we are paid by the community. And those people, those are the people that I wanna see run for, for council, run for mayor, run. And, and be a part of this, you know? So I think we have to keep that open to them. So. Again, I like the Tuesdays. It gives us an, an extra day, but I'm still with the two meetings and I like the five P M.
And just for clarity, I, I do like the five P M. I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hoffel. Any other comments from counselors? Okay, you know, Counselor Weeb, go ahead.
Yeah, I know we don't get paid a big dollar. But if you're getting seven hundred dollars a month to take one day off of work, I think that needs to be brought into consideration too. It's not like you're taking the day off for no reason, but I am fine with the five o'clock start and I'm fine with. One meeting a month with the second meeting as a tentative if we need it.
Thank you, Counselor Weeb. Any other comments from counselors? Counselor Howe?
Uh, just um, to comment to Counselor Weebs, um, and then, and, and another point to make, um. Seven hundred dollars a month, it's actually not. And um, there's a lot more that we do than just a council meeting. So that, 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 I don't see how that fits, but that being said, um. The agenda, okay, so we're talking about the agenda possibly coming out on Tuesdays if this meeting is once a month, which is fine. However, these, these agendas are gonna be twice the size, which is fine also, but part of the can. I think part of the conversation that's been had in the, in the past among council is, you know, it'd be really nice to be able to have our weekend. And granted, it's only once a month, so perhaps that, that makes it a little bit easier. Um, but. Is anyone open to like a Wednesday, which buys us a couple of extra evenings to get through this agenda? How did we get Tuesday? Where did that come from?
Um, I was gonna get staff to answer, but Counselor Weeb, your hand is up. Go ahead. Mister Taylor can answer right after you.
Um, I can honestly say that, um. The hospital board in Kamloops is usually on Wednesday. And the S L R D are always Wednesday, Thursday. So depending on what time of the month it is. Which doesn't sound good, but whatever, that I, I. If it was the first week of the month, I wouldn't care if it was a Wednesday, but if it's last week or the, you know, it, it just gets. Complicated with my Wednesdays. I, I think I was one of the ones that put Tuesday. I'm anything but Monday, so.
Fridays then? Mister Taylor?
Something would be open after eight, Mister Bussy.
Okay, no, uh, so, any more comments, counselors? Counselor Howe?
I'm just curious, um, because the committee of the holes fall before the meetings. Um, and the committees of the hole are, I mean, that's where we get to have our, our roundtable conversations and really get in and pick. And you know, pick things apart, which are beautiful, and I think they're really important processes. So how, how would that look then? Would we be having a different day for the committees of the hole? Would they then come after the meeting, the, the? Uh, council meetings, in which case, was, what's the difference? Why are we haggling over times and how many meetings we're having? Just curious.
Mister Taylor?
On the um, proposed schedule, Mister Mayor, we have committed the holes still at five o'clock, but called as needed. Uh, rather than scheduled as they were this year.
Okay, you got that, Counselor Howe?
I do. I remember though also that we had asked for the count, the committee of the holes to be scheduled. Have we decided that this is not? Something we wanna do anymore?
Um, Mister Mayor, from the feedback that we got from um, council, um. The desire to go to the five o'clock meetings and then where to move the committee of the holes to, if at all, wasn't really discussed. Um, so we could still have it as, on another day, uh, but then we're back to the, the two meetings again.
Okay, and your point is, Counselor Howe?
Just wondering if we'd all considered this yet or not.
Of course, I, I certainly have, yeah.
I'm thinking committees of the hole are a pretty important process, so you know, to, to have them is important. And, and if they're on a different day, then. Are, are we just looking to have less of them? I think going forward, we might actually need more of them.
But if you look, I think it was, from my perspective, it was a natural tendency. Look at the meeting that we're having today. We start off with the cow, we go to the regular and we have the closed. If we do that once a month, Bob's your uncle. And we might even have time afterwards to go and imbibe together as a group or have a sandwich. That's my feeling on it. I didn't ever feel that we were throwing the, the committee of the hole out. I'm not sure if everyone else felt that. Mister Deniger, want to comment?
Yeah, so I do think the committee of the holes are valuable, um. This is actually an example of how having it on the same day this tight can actually be a problem. I think we're gonna run out of time and not actually get to the last item. Um, but it also shows the value of the committee of the whole meetings. They could be back to back. We could do committee of the whole on Mondays when needed. Um, which is closer to the Tuesday meeting if you decide that's when you're gonna do regulars. And then again, that interruption throughout the month isn't as dramatic as doing it every two weeks and that interruption that happens to staff. Um, as well, committee of the holes could be something that happened only in the off season as well, just like the regular meetings have been going down. To once a month through the summer. We could do the same thing for committee of the holes. There's times of year where they just don't add a lot of value. And we're just gonna end up canceling them. Um, so again, we can set time aside to have them. They could be during the day if council decides it wants that. Um, or it can be back to back one day after another, or we just maybe need to allow more time between when committee the whole starts and when regular starts. There, there's no right answer. It's gotta be what works for you as council. See, it is a tough decision. It's hard for staff to make a recommendation because you all seem to have conflicting schedules and desires. Um, and I see that Mister Taylor really wants to jump in, so see what he's got to say.
Well, just before Mister Taylor says if I can make a comment. Obviously, we have a bit of control over the agenda, or at least I do the mayor either. So if you consider this one. We knew this was gonna take a lot of time. Really? Did we have to bring the Freeman Award up for discussion? I mean, that's a very unique situation because of COVID. Normally, it wouldn't even be on our agenda. It would be a normal thing. It only happens every two years. So, you know, I mean, we gotta cut some slack for our staff and for ourselves. And uh, and basically, we can control our agenda to be really meaningful. And for every committee of the hall and for every regular meeting. Go ahead, Mister Taylor.
Uh, just to address something that you said earlier, Mister Mayor, uh, you said one meeting a month fit in the committee of the whole, the regular council meeting and the closed meeting. The regular council meeting does need to be scheduled and published with the time. Um, so we can't just say we're holding meetings between five o'clock to ten o'clock. It has to be. Committee of the whole at five, council at seven, so that people can know when they're showing up for a particular meeting.
Okay, Counselor Weeb.
Okay, I'm trying to breathe so I don't lose my stuff here. I think we just need to make a decision. And I think Tuesday at five o'clock, one meeting a month to try it out and see what happens. Is what I would like to put on the table because as well as staff. Having maybe not being as constructive the day after a ten o'clock meeting. I am not as constructive at a ten o'clock meeting or even a nine o'clock meeting. So. And that's being on teams, so I have no idea like if these meetings were running into. Nine, ten o'clock every time we had them. And we're meeting out and then we get home and it's ten thirty or eleven. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm still looking at the. Council meeting at three A M. So I'm not really constructive the next day either. So I prefer just to pass it for Tuesday at five o'clock and be done with it.
Yeah, okay, we're, if you can be very quick, Counselor Hoffel, we're kinda going around and going the same thing over. I think what we should do. Uh, after your comments is that uh, we decide, obviously, we don't have consensus, so we'll look at each one of those proposed. And table and vote on them. Is that appropriate, Mister Taylor? Me, I'm thinking about that, Counselor Hoffel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll be really quick. Somebody put out there um, about the committee of the holes being on a Monday night. And I, I don't know how you guys all feel about that, but a Monday night for the committee of the hole at five o'clock and then a Tuesday. Night for the council meeting is still wrapping it up in two days. I think it's still doable. And like I said, I, I just feel that. Um, we don't have a lot of people running for mayor and council, and I don't wanna put that barrier so that people think, hey, I'd love to run, but. You know, I can't attend meetings during the day because I'm at work and I don't get off till five, you know, like. It's not just me as a working person. I think that we are eliminating a bunch of people. So I, I'd like to see, I, I don't know, like I said, whoever put it out Monday and Tuesday, I kinda like that option too. So I'd like that to be one of the votes. Thanks.
Okay, Mister Taylor, can we deal with each one of the proposed schedules? And vote on it because I don't think we're gonna get unanimous consent.
Uh, Mister Mayor, a member of council should put a motion on the table for uh, which ever won and then it's seconded, it can be voted on.
Okay. I wait for council. Counselor Weeb?
I would like to put motion on the table that we have one council meeting per month. Tuesday nights at five o'clock.
Seconder? That's Counselor Leach. I normally would ask any further discussion, but I think we gotta be cautious here. Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? So it's three to two. It's carried. Okay, we'll move on. In light of the time, uh, Mister Taylor, Mister Deniger, can we just postpone the, the uh? The uh. Freeman Award arrangement?
Yes, we can, we'll, we'll simply defer this item until the next committee of the whole.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, this is kinda some of the stuff I know I get. Why are we even dealing with it? Can't it be something that's staff deals with? It's a normal event that, that, that has to happen. COVID has. Boiled us up and, and we get into it, but anyway, let's discuss that after. We gotta prepare for the regular meeting. Do I have to make a mo, uh, go ahead, Counselor Weeb?
Um, I'd like to propose that with the Freeman Awards, that. I think it's really nice if mayor and all of council can be there, but I think a date and it's just needs to be picked. A place to have it be picked, and if you can be there, be there. And if you can't, oh, well, better luck in two years. Because this is crazy. We could go on forever talking about it. And it's already been postponed a couple of times. We're gonna be into next year soon. So I, I don't know. I, I would just like to put that out there, that staff pick a date that works. For whoever needs to be there from staff and the rest of us work around it, like somewhere we have to give and take here.
Okay, I guess since we've put it up for discussion, I am not gonna be able to shut it down. But I have to give the opportunity for the other council members to uh, to uh, throw in. Counselor Hoffel?
Sorry, I just have to go back cause I, I missed the, like, the committee of the whole meeting. So I thought, just so I've got this clear, one council meeting per month on Tuesday night, starting at five P M. What about the committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, so committee of the whole meetings, if you look at the top of the suggested schedule, it says committee of the whole five P M. called as needed. And since council voted overwhelmingly to do regular meetings on Tuesdays. That leaves Mondays at five o'clock free for committee of the holes when they're needed. So if, if the mayor is, or to the chair basically. Um, wants to bring something to a committee of the hole, if it's appropriate for that, then he just consults with staff and we call a committee of the hole on the Monday at five. That gives us more time if we've got really tough conversations to have. We don't have to worry about cutting it off at seven. Um, and, and as you mentioned, it, it's one week of packed work for us instead of spread over the month. But it wouldn't be a regular scheduled committee every other Monday. It would be when it makes sense to.
And we don't have to bore on that. Okay, thanks. Back to the Freeman.
Okay, comments on the Freeman? I'm in agreement with what Counselor Weeb said. Yes, Counselor Leach, go ahead.
I'm in full agreement. The only thing that I would like is, is that. We get more than a week and a half or ten days notice of when it's gonna happen. That was the only problem that I had. I don't wanna be a part of the planning. I don't care. I trust staff. Just give us some more notice because my schedule is, is a month out at least usually. So that was the only issue I had when it came up.
Okay. Next, Counselor Howe?
Uh, I second that. That was the biggest challenge for me as well.
Okay, Mister Deniger?
Um, then the most important question that I have is what timeline would work for council? Are we thinking in the next month, three months, sometime before the end of the year?
Okay, from my, I'll lead off. From my perspective, COVID's gotta be over. We gotta make, it's a real important celebration. I don't like this crap about virtual, to be honest with you, and you know, running them through an individual. We gotta get together and celebrate. And that, to my perspective, I don't care how long it takes. We've already waited this long. We wanna make it a nice celebration where all of us can be there. If possible, obviously, then an individual or two may not, but the group of people that we get them together and celebrate this very important. A special occasion. That's my take.
I'll second that.
Great. Okay, you got that? Mister Deniger, do we have to do a resolution here for the recommendation?
I believe there was a mover and seconder of something. Is our corporate officer tracking that one?
Uh, it was, it was a mover and seconder of an idea, not of, of a motion. Mister Mayor, I believe at this point, um, staff have enough direction to move forward. Thank you.
I take that. Thank you kindly. Okay, thank you, council. And uh. And uh bylaws, notice of motion, uh we'll dispense with the report of the C A O. And we'll move to rise and report. I need someone to move that the June twenty first committee of the whole meeting rise and report. Counselor Weeb, second Counselor Howe. Call the question, those in favor? Carried. Thank you, guys. Lot of bulldozing work, much, much appreciated. And we'll allow staff to get ready for the regular meeting. Thank you kindly.